Calling the meeting to order at 6:03 PM. We're going to ask that the Secretary, Ms. Quest, do the roll call. How are you?
Nina Dementon. This voice, David Rodco.
Yeah.
Paul Carroll. On West Side. Kenny Spohr.
Yeah.
Dave Stachek.
Yeah. Chairman? Yes. Are we recording? Is anybody... So, we're actually on video tape, so we're fine. So, tonight's hearing is going to be on video camera. And tonight's guest speakers are the Assistant Town Manager, Mr. David Rodriguez. I'm sorry, I don't know the gentleman to be all right. Do you please introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Michael Wang from our second town in Foreman Place.
Mr. Michael Wang?
Wang, W-A-N-G.
Wang. From Foreman Place, giving a presentation on the current maps. Is that what it is? Close current maps?
Sure.
All right. So, we'll turn it over to you guys. And then, if there's public comment and questions after your presentation, we will do a public commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you to the members of the board, and thank you to everybody for coming this evening. Especially, and I do want to thank a couple individuals who, you know, who I rely on personally to store our full insight as things move on. Mr. E., Mr. Dimes, Mr. Riley, and Mr. Dowd. I really appreciate your time and effort. And you're passionate about these issues. What we're trying to do tonight is, this is not a proposal. This is not a suggestion. This is an analysis. This is what we took. We took a look at this independent of any project that is currently proposed in the Town of Winter that is going through permitting. So, there's a difference in this case between the permitting, the enforcement, and the implementation of the zoning, and the analysis of the zoning. What we think it is, and what we think it could be, and what we think, what we want to hear your voices as to what it should be. So, we're going to present our analysis today. We're going to show and tell you how we got there. We're going to tell you what it is, tell you what it's not, and we're going to listen to your input as you think what it should be. So, I do want to thank Michael Wang from Foreman Place for taking the time. We listened to the community that this was a longstanding question. This was an important question for us to answer. So, we spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, looking at these things in a creative, thoughtful way, so that we can finally come to an agreement on how, not what necessarily had it implemented, but what the future should look like. Zoning is a policy statement about the future. And it's what the town wants the town to look like. It's what the town wants the town to be. And it's how you tell the world, this is what you want your town to look like. So, we take that seriously, and we're going to start looking at these things more comprehensively. We wanted to get the map question out of the way, so that we can define the boundaries of the... Give it to the planning board, so that they can make their suggestions to the town council. They can define what they want the boundaries to be. And then, we're going to take a hard look at what the black letter zoning is, so we can take a look at, make sure that it reflects what the town wants. So, I'll be here for questions as long as I need to be, from the members of the board, chairman, members of the public. And I'll give it to Michael to give a presentation on this. Just the caveat that this is not a proposal. This is just an analysis, and this is all open to suggestion interpretation. We want to hear what you have to say, so that when it does come time to give a proposal, it accurately reflects what the town's looking for. So, thank you again to Michael. Thank you to the board. And I'll give it over to Michael. Thank you.
Thank you. So, again, Michael Wang from Foreman Place. And I assume some of you would recognize me from the couple of years I spent here doing the CBD master plan with Mass Development and the NA PC. So, I'm very pleased to have been asked to come back and participate in, in theory, part of the implementation process. So, we've had some meetings, and, you know, as Joe...
That's the last guy. That's... A much more handsome than Joe.
Should we take a vote on that? Okay. I think you're right. Okay. So, anyway, we've been talking, and we've... One of the first things that we really tackled was looking at the maps, the current maps that you have, and what some of the influences would be on proposing some changes to that for the CBD. I think what goes hand in hand with that, obviously, are what are the criteria that you have for design standards in the CBD. So, when we think about expanding it, and where those boundaries are for the existing center business district, it's really important to keep in mind the criteria that go with that relative to the residence A district and the business A districts that butt the CBD or are butted. Okay? So, let's just jump through a series of maps here. What you basically have at the moment are, these two maps have been produced over the years. The one on the right is the 2006, it's called Street and Zoning Plan. And this is the one that's actually codified at the moment, and the zoning bylaw refers to. It has all the districts labeled here. The purple in the center here you see is the center business district. What you should note about this plan is it's very poor resolution. It does not have a lot of detail. When we try to zoom in, you'll see what I'm talking about. But it also only consists of streets, okay? It only has the street profiles here. It does not have any reference to property lines or anything like that. So, this is what your current codified map is today. And I'll show you how we sort of look at analyzing that a little bit further. The map on the left here was produced by the NA PC in 2014. This was prior to the CBD master plan process that we went through. It is based on the Massachusetts GIS underlay. So, you can see these lines that you see all throughout the center district here are actually the property lines. And they have a much easier to read profile line for the center business district, which is essentially the pink line. And then, the two business A districts over off Winter Street are more in the orange color here. So, let's look at the 2006 map first.
So, sorry, is that 14th map in your view an official map?
Well, let's try to hold our questions to the end. What I'll say is, you see these magical five letters on the upper right here, say draft? And I haven't seen any indication anywhere that that was actually adopted. I think that's what you said as well. So, while that's... While there was an amendment to the center business district that the NA PC put forward that did a lot of really positive things, in my opinion, about allowing mixed use and new dimensional criteria in the center business district, this piece of it doesn't appear to have been codified. So, that's my take on it, anyway. Okay. So, here's a blow up of your 2006 Street and Zoning Plan. And again, if you sort of bear with me and look closely at the purple, you'll see that as we then introduce on top of that the Mass GIS map, which is very precise, you can see that not only does this map not directly correspond, and I've scaled this six ways to Sunday, but basically, when a map like that has been reproduced over the years, it tends to stretch, and it sometimes stretches more in one direction than it does in the other. So, in some instances, you can tell where the purple does coincide with the property line, and it's pretty straightforward that, you know, for example, these parcels along Winter Street, fronting on Winter Street, really are clearly in that district. But in other cases, it gets a little more ambiguous, particularly along the southern border here. And so, what we did was we worked with these maps, and we shifted the map and scaled it based on each block. So, we would take that block first and look at it closely, get it as centered as we could. And then, we did that with each one of the blocks. And you can see, this is really where this block ends up being. This is where the CBS is. And, you know, the lines do not correspond necessarily to the existing parcel line. So, there's numerous cases where parcels are half in and half out of the center business district per this map. So, then, this is a clean version of it. It gets rid of the sort of fuzzy underlay, if you will. And again, you can see some really interesting conditions, like on Fremont Street here, where the purple line's going right through the middle of these two parcels. It gets more interesting than this because the NA PC map does a very different thing. And you'll see that there are a number of parcels that are in the NA PC version of the CBDs and are not in this, and vice versa. So, here is the NA PC map, and I did these drawings using an AutoCAD file, so it's about as precise as it can be. I brought this PDF version of the NA PC map into AutoCAD and scaled it, and it aligned perfectly. You can see, you can see the PDF sort of going off the edge of the page here, and literally all the parcels align perfectly. And this is about as accurate as you can get. But again, if you start to do an analysis of the NA PC line, which is hard for us to fathom why, because they're very precise planners and talented, but you can see there are a number of cases here where, again, this line is going through the middle of properties as well. So, what I think is really interesting is to compare the two as an overlay. Most of here's, well, here's what a clean version of the NA PC map looks like. I'm not sure what that's telling you anymore than the previous ones this month, but we can circle back to that. So, here, you have the NA PC map in a profile. It's this heavy line that you see going around the perimeter of Pauline Street. And then, you can see, that's overlaid with the 2006 map that we generated. And this, again, Fremont Street is one of the bigger conditions where these five parcels, I'd say about equivalent of four of them, are in one and not in the other. So, and again, you can see other divisions where the business A district and pretty much the whole southern border is not coincidental between those two maps. So, that's where sort of this process is going to sort of lead us to trying to make judgments about ultimately where this line should be. There are other components to it. A big piece of the master plan process that we went through was doing a feasibility study on what could happen with the middle school site. And these town-owned parcels up here north of Pauline Street, none of them are in the zoning district right now. They're all just town-owned. They don't have any zoning classification, which obviously presents a real challenge to any developer coming in and not knowing what criteria to adhere to. And so, that's one of the first steps that's really important for economic development in your town. So, we'll talk about that in a second. So, here now, sort of in the brownish gold color, you can see a first sort of estimate by me of where I think the most logical boundary line would be, which is a combination of the NA PC map and the 2006 codified map. And essentially, what I did was I followed all the property lines and the center lines of the streets. So, you see, you come down here to Jefferson, and then I jump up, and I follow the property lines of these parcels that go deeper in off of Winter Street, and then cuts across here, goes behind Michael's Mall. And then, down through here, there's a number of interesting conditions where the lines, none of the lines are on a parcel line. So, essentially, I followed a parcel line. There's a question about the Meriden Housing Authority parcel and whether that should be in or out. And that's another great subject for debate, which we can get into a little bit if you want. And some other conditions over here, which questions about whether certain parcels should be in or out. There are some areas where it's simply a matter of clean, like the yellow circles are simply a matter of areas where you're, just need to clean up the lines and make sure that the zone corresponds. There are these red, three red areas are areas that I think require a little more attention. I walked the whole boundary a couple of weeks ago and took some photographs. And over here on Somerset Ave and cutting across Cottage Park, you can see there's some conditions where there really isn't much logic to where these boundaries were proposed or documented by either entity. They go right through the middle of the parcels here, and so logically, you might want to, you know, follow a parcel line. The yellow dash line reflects the potential new line, and it goes between parcels back through here. Again, we can come back and revisit any of these. Similarly, over here on Putnam, you have a condition where, you know, this, the Putnam place cuts through the circle, and the line kind of just zigzags through there, getting across to Jefferson and the back of Michael's Mall. And again, what's the logic here? Thinking about where you might want to have the flexibility to have mixed commercial use, you know, Jefferson Street, these first parcels of Putnam Jefferson Street, you know, on both sides, it seems logical that they would be in the CBDs, that it gives you the flexibility to have commercial uses that close to French Square. And then, I've sort of touched on this before, but as you get over to the Fremont and Winter World, and you have this sort of dead-end alleyway there, what's the name of that? Burm? Yeah. Anyway, there are buildings that are currently outside of both areas that are either industrial or commercial in nature. So, you're never going to get every, you know, every use exactly in or out of the zone. But that's where we might have an official conversation. Once we get sort of an idea of what's the most appropriate boundary, then you can talk about what your aspirations are for future land use, and that might be a part of the discussion. So, again, here's the map. If you take off the overlay of the two other maps, you can see now it's following either the center line of streets or it's always on a parcel line. And, you know, the ramifications of where that line falls really has to do with, if you're inside and you're on the border, you have certain dimensional criteria that are adjusted as those parcels are intended to transition from the center business district to the residential district, so they can have less height, for example. So, it's important, you know, where, which parcels are on the line. And again, I'm sure it's important for the folks that are right outside of the line as well to have that transition. So, here's the question about adding on these parcels north of Pauline. Now, I'll show you at the end. I brought some of the, at least one of the studies that we did during the master planning process to rethink what some of the issues were with these parcels. These parcels are quite large up here. You know, the middle school parcels here, the three buildings they're on is a little over two acres, about 2.15 acres, which is actually would be the largest parcel in the CBD. The other parcels that have previous size are Michael's Mall site and, well, the Meriden Housing site is also large, but in this map, it's not. So, anyway, this is a potential proposal for getting a zoning associated criteria associated with those parcels, so that they will be part of implementation process for redevelopment. Now, let's see. Let me share just a couple more things. This is a land use map that was produced before the master plan was done, and it was included in the master plan. It's just interesting to look at where the sort of municipal institutional parcels are. And what this map really is showing is it's showing the CBD and what they call the supporting areas around it. And I think this is an interesting way to think about it, because now you see that the multifamily housing project down here is in. You can see Metcalf Square, the church, and the parking lot here are all included in this diagram. So, when I look at this, I go, it makes a lot of sense, you know, that these supporting areas have sort of, well, either a municipal or a commercial quality to them, that you could ask yourself, maybe eventually down the road, you might want to consider those being zoned in a similar way. So, and that's what, taking that map and translating it onto plan would look like. You see, we're picking up some of these areas off of Winter and by Metcalf Square. And I even was suggesting you might pick up the other side of this street here off of Fremont, because those are commercial or industrial buildings. This area in particular off of Winter, I think, you know, even going down Side Street here, you know, the Horizon Building, you know, the buildings, there's, you know, a Mass in that, which is quite a bit of uses that are currently zoned residential A. And so, when they are supportive of the center business district. So, that's the whole thing. So, now, this is just an interesting diagram that is similar to that land use that I think you saw. But now, you can begin to see, the red is all the places where you have a retail focus, and the greenish color are municipal uses. The blue are some scattered commercial industrial uses. And the purple is the mixed use that has at least a combo effect. And what's interesting is the surrounding yellow is the residential, and you can see how it kind of finds its way in here in particular, up Fremont Street. And it strikes me when I, you know, I've been walking around the CBD for about four years now, and you've got, you know, French Square obviously is a huge focal point. There's some just amazing opportunities here to potentially connect to Ingleside. Part talked about that in the master plan. But I also think this is a fascinating connection from Jefferson, up Jefferson to this sort of area here, and then to Metcalf. It just feels like this is another really nice node, has some really nice architecture. And there's something about that whole Jefferson Street border that feels like it, you know, town wants to be part of that equation, but that's perhaps a little far down the road. So, just a couple more slides, and I pronounce I'm stopping. This is the second part of the proposal that we haven't really gotten to yet. But obviously, when you think about the maps and what's appropriate for the boundary, you have to think about some of the recommendations that were made in the master plan for, you know, continuing to think about evolving the zoning. I think, again, as I said before, the NA PC recommendations were terrific by and large. I find, and I've written a lot of zoning bylaws from down in Connecticut up to Massachusetts, and oftentimes, having a minimum criteria is equally as important as having a maximum criteria. So, everybody's always worried about too much height. But from my sort of urban design, if I'm wearing an urban design hat, sometimes I feel like having just one-story buildings really is, makes it challenging to define a quality streetscape and environment. So, sometimes, you know, saying that future development should have two stories, I know that's, there's a lot of economics involved that makes use for whatnot. Defining quality streets is always something that we will come back to. And for me, that has a lot to do with how buildings are sighted relative to the street. So, if you think about it, even in your, you know, core area around French Square, you have Michael's that is really like a mall kind of configuration, where the parking is in front of the building, and there's nothing but helping to define the streetscape there. You have a lot of drive-throughs. You have a lot of auto-buy shops that have parking and cars in front of the building. So, the buildings aren't actually contributing to define the street. So, those are the kinds of things that can be tweaked to make a more desirable pedestrian environment. And then, lastly, I think, you know, thinking about density and FAR, how much you can build on a site, is important to think about. And also, if you're introducing new parcels like north of Pauline Street that are larger, you know, what are the opportunities there? They're fronting on open space, so maybe through a special permit process, you can have a little more flexibility on what can be done there. But again, the transition to the neighborhoods is very important. And then, there's many other variables to consider, including parking. You may remember these diagrams. I just have three images here. They just talk about that whole issue of connectivity of Jefferson through to the park. You may remember we had a concept that looked at reusing the middle school site and had a sort of an open amphitheater passing through those connections from Pauline to the park, both visually and literally. It had a mix of uses with some community uses and retail on the ground floor and residential above, sort of taking advantage of that location between and seating in the park. And maybe you can do some quite nice stuff there that feels appropriate in scale and, you know, sort of introduce it. So, that's my thought.
Okay. What I think we should do is let the board ask any questions, if anybody has any questions. And then, once the board has finished its questions and discussion, we can let the...
Is this a board meeting?
Yes. Then we can let public comment. Okay? Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Chang or Mr. Rodriguez?
On the board?
On the board?
On Wang, I'm sorry.
No problem. My long was good.
Robert? I just wanted to back up and talk about process a little bit, or have you talk about process a little bit. This is obviously a need for us to define the boundary. You know, I think a question of whether, what's legal now versus what our aspirations are are those are kind of two questions. But what's legal now, just because we're a little bit stuck in a rut when folks kind of come up to us. And again, it just brings a lot of heat on a lot of these conversations of people who are in or out. I know there's some folks in the room that are very, care very much where that line lands. And so, I just want to talk a little bit about, or have you talk a little bit about what your process is. What was the mechanism that actually hired you and brought you to here? What your scope of work is? And how you're expecting the planning board to engage with you or not, to help reach your conclusions?
You want? Sure. Thank you. It's a very important, very thoughtful question, and I appreciate it. How we got here in the process that we engaged in with this particular analysis is that, particularly how it relates to current projects in the pipeline, is that we firewall them away from each other. Is that...
Sorry.
Sorry. So, we firewall them away from each other. Is that if the zoning enforcement officer was not part of this process, he did not, he has not seen this, he's not here tonight. Michael has, was not part of any zoning enforcement decisions that have been recently made or ever that are currently being permitted. The only common denominator is me, and I didn't influence either process. I wanted these things to happen organically as they should, so that we can both answer the question, but we could also give permit seekers due process. They have a right to seek a permit. They have a right to be ruled up or down on a permit. And like Town Attorney said, the zoning enforcement decision comes from the zoning enforcement office. So, he was not involved in this process. He has not seen this presentation. And Michael has not spoken to him about any current projects in the CBD. We wanted to keep them separate. We firewall them away from each other to keep their, keep them independent, so that they would not influence each other in any way. So, yes, in the process of how we got here and why we're taking this path forward, it was abundantly clear, I've been working for the town for about five months. I wasn't here for 15 minutes before this was presented as a problem. So, we took a very thoughtful approach on how to solve it while we have things on the permit, while we have permitted people, projects seeking permits in the pipeline. So, we were very careful. We took a step back. Normally, a planning process would be a lot slower, a lot more deliberate. But we heard from the community, we listened to the community, that this is important, that we needed to do an analysis, so that we're all playing by the same rules. A lot of folks in the room may have heard me say in the past, you could ask 10 different people the same question regarding these maps and get 10 different answers. That's not good, either from an economic development standpoint, from a planning standpoint, from a planning board standpoint, from a zoning enforcement standpoint, because we need predictability. We need to all play by the same rules. We need to all know where the lines fall. We were not prepared, Michael and I, Town Attorney, some other folks that are, some of Michael's staff that are involved, we were not prepared to make valid judgments on the path, planning toward the town council, on what it should be. We want to tell you what, we analyzed all the available information. We looked back at the sample town map, and this did give us guidance and form the presentation this evening. And we're asking for it. We're looking for suggestions on what it should be, so that when the time comes for you to consider something rock solid, you have something, you don't have 12 matches in one. So, there's a number of maps up here that are important, but it's just an analysis. It's not implementation or...
Can I just, by the way, on that, and just say, well, I think the question behind your question was, I see there's sort of three different things here, right? There's the cleaning up of the existing boundary and using whatever documentation exists to really kind of try to nail what exists there today. The second piece is this town aspiration to include the north of Pauline parcels. And then, the other future land use stuff is probably not the first priority at the moment, but it's just part of the larger vision, the understanding of why, you know, of the importance of redefining those boundaries.
We wanted to give, we wanted to give the board and the public as many options as we can, based on the current...
Any other questions? Yeah, I guess the last piece of it was who's directing, Mr. Wang right now. So, you know, so there's a scope of work and he signed up for a certain amount of dollars or time. And he's reporting to you or the town manager and/or the town council or, because he, this is the first time that we're seeing any of this, and that's great, it seems pretty, it's early. I just, I guess I'm just trying to figure out the process in which you're going to move forward, how are you going to get your daily or weekly feedback, and if that involves those or not.
Of course, no, no question. It involves the public as well, so that we can get input on that. This is a town manager's office during the process. We heard the concerns in the community, and we wanted to take, we wanted to show some leadership on solving the question. So we did engage more in place, we sought funding from the council, we received some support through, you know, financially from the council in order to support Michael's efforts. He's working, I guess, under my direction, I guess is the way to put it. I'm just coordinating efforts, I'm not trying to influence the process. Outside of, so, I will, I will put a small tag on that, is that we've heard from the town council that one of the priorities is the development of the middle school site. We've also heard that from the public as well, that this has kind of been a longstanding issue for the town, they want to see it developed, they want to see it get off the town books, and they want to see it get on the tax rolls. That's an important thing for us to do, and it's one of the priorities for the town manager's office for us, to us to achieve. When we started taking a look back, we realized there's no underlying zoning. So we said, okay, what's the easiest, what's the path of least resistance in order to get underlying zoning for our property, it is to extend the CBD. That's why we gave it this option. And we need to have underlying zoning for that site no matter what, but this is the path of least resistance. This is an option, it's not the only one.
So just curious, in terms of that, you view those as two separate processes, establishing the current CBD map, the disposition out and then extending it, or we zone the middle school site as a second phase?
We can, or...
Or one map that may be...
The reason we're engaging so early is we kind of view it as a holistic process. We don't view it as an incremental process. The problem with incrementalism is sometimes it gets interrupted. So we want to present the issues with the options whole hog, so that we're able to say, this is, these are the problems as we see it, and the board is able to make the value judgments on how they're going to solve them, based upon input from the community, input from economic development officials at the town hall. We say this is, this is what the consequence of that might be. But if you don't zone them through this process, we have to find another way to zone, either through another process or something else. So the map is, the map is what we, anything we want, it's, this is a process moving forward. So we're able to adapt something to...
Any thoughts on the board?
Is there, I can respect that you're keeping both sides separate along with the zoning enforcement officer. Is there any point during this process that he is going to get involved with what you're doing at some point during the process before it gets to the end? Or is he going to be kept, is that going to be kept separate?
I don't know, maybe it depends on how the process evolves. If there comes a time where the zoning enforcement officer has to be involved in this process, we'll certainly involve him, but we made a contract that cannot be solved until this point.
Okay, I'm just worried, but at some point down the road...
He's going to be, he's going to force it, so he's going to have to get involved somewhat.
Right.
But now's the time.
We're adopting the map change, is pointing what we do and make recommendations to council, right?
That's it, I don't have a question, I was born for the benefit of the room, just going to make a comment, which is, this is the analysis, as you said, these are ideas and based off the public comment and continued analysis and however that process moves on. The way it goes from here, our understanding is that we would make a recommendation to the town council, and the town council is who actually puts it into effect, not the town manager's office, not us. We would make the recommendation, just depending on what's at hand.
And the reason we're engaging with the planning board now is to kind of expedite that process as much as we can, because we are listening to concerns in the community that they want it done quickly. We could have had a pub meeting, as much as we love having a planning board here, we could have done it without you. But we wanted to have you involved in this process from the jump, so that we're able to keep the process moving, so that we're, you are fully informed from the beginning, you're here as, you're here as fully invested actors in this. So we wanted to, we thought that was an important part of the process. This is not, we're not making any decisions tonight, there's nothing up for your consideration. This is, this is an analysis and that's in terms of development.
Robert? Yeah, just a follow-up. It's great to see a lot of folks here tonight, but what are you doing to extend that outreach to the full Winthrop community, so you can make sure that you have a full cross-section of all involved? This is the center of the town, I know folks live adjacent to it, and their, their views are very important, and we want to make sure it's a balance for those, those folks. But this is the center of the whole town, and I'm not sure, at least as I look in this room, whether the whole town, obviously 17,000 people aren't in this room. So what are some of the ways in which you're going to get feedback from the broader gaze and the broader Winthrop population?
Sure. For this meeting tonight, we did two blasts on Facebook, two blasts on Twitter, it's on the, it's on the town's webpage, we put it in the, we put it in the newspaper. So those are the traditional outreach efforts that we're doing. As of tonight, or tomorrow morning probably, this will be online. We'll, we'll chase that outreach with further outreach, saying we want to get your input on this, please email townmanagers@town.winthrop.us, give us your feedback, we'll track all the feedback and we'll start to distill that as we start to further refine the map for the board's consideration. Winthrop is itself limited in terms of the outreach tools that we have available to us. We do not use our robocall system for purposes of this. Email blasts, things like that are more rare than they should be. We are, we are enhancing our outreach efforts and we're going to look to step that up through this process and how the process is moving forward.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Okay, I'll open it up to public. Hold on a second.
No questions on that, I'll say that.
I didn't acknowledge you, other people raised their hands, Chris. So I'm going to have Joanna speak first, then you can go second, and then...
Thank you. I have a lot of thoughts running through my head right now. Everyone in the room mostly knows that I'm in owner of property on Somerset, focus area one. It may make sense to go back to that slide as I, as I kind of talk for a few minutes. I have to say, I think you did an amazing job. I am happy that the town is going through this process, as you call it, and I'm in favor of everything that you suggested. I am also very confounded at the moment, encouraged, but confounded. You talk about it as a process, and this is the first step of a process. The reality is, though, that life goes on, business goes on, mortgage payments need to be made, there are property owners, there are residents, there are people who are living this every day, who have been dealing with the process for many years at this point. We can't continue to wait. So I looked at this map, and three weeks ago, if that, I sat in front of this board with my project, and a letter was read by the zoning officer, who now somehow is not included in this process, that ruled that my property abuts residential district, which I vehemently disagree with, but that was the rule. Which then sets my project into a very long and very costly and very uncertain approval process in the town, which I know was never actually the intent of the town. All that aside, we are working through that. And so three weeks ago, this board, who had listened to and evaluated our project, had to make a determination on approving my project based on the zoning officer's letter, which based very clearly, visually, on every single map that is shown here, is actually not accurate. On these maps, whether you showed the 2006 or the 2014, the overlay that clarity, on every single one of them, my property does not abut a residential district, which is wonderful to see up here. I would like to make that notation, but I am also actually now a bit confounded as to how the town got to a point where three weeks ago, this supposed official zoning officer is making a ruling that is, three weeks later, in public, he presented at the official mantra of the town, the official map of the town, is different, and now it's being presented as the beginning of a process. I would love to hear your comments on that.
Well, first of all, this is not the official map.
The 2006 is the official map of the town.
You spoke for a long time, let me, please let me respond. The zoning enforcement officer's implementation and enforcement of any permit was held independent of this process. He was, he's never seen this map.
He's seen that he uses.
He's never seen this map here. He used the 2006 map as a peering on the website, the same map...
Which is blurry and is now cleared up, so he did not have the right data to make the judgment.
He makes the judgment. That's the same as every other town in Massachusetts. He was not influenced by me, by, by the town manager's office, by Michael Wang.
I'm not suggesting he was.
No, there was no influence at all. He didn't have the benefit of it, he didn't have the benefit of this analysis, because we're viewing them as separate processes. You have a right as a permit seeker to have due process, to have the board rule up or down on, on your project, when those are drawn, as any other permit seeker would. We're viewing this for future projects moving forward, because we have to answer the question, so that we can avoid the confusion that was found with the consideration of your project. And so we kept those processes separate for a reason, so as to not influence them either way.
But can I just ask for a clarification? Because what I'd like to, I'm just confused, because the analysis that you did, and this is for the benefit of everyone in the room, not just my project, but that map, the first one, the 06 map, is admittedly very, very fuzzy. You did the best you could with all of the technology that's available to you to come up with the position here. So my question to you now is, the overlay that you're presenting to this room tonight that says 2006, that's the official view of what that map says?
Not with the overlay. Not with the overlay.
No, not with the overlay, but, but the version that shows just what the 2006 shows.
Definitely with a second slide, just the zoomed-in version of 2006.
The zoomed-in of 2006, yes, not with the overlay, not talking about the overlay.
This map. This is the official map of the CBD, zoomed in. This is my point when I say that you could ask 10 people where this line lies and get 10 different answers. That's the purpose of this process. But that's the purpose of this process, is to clarify it for the future. We're doing this for the benefit of the town and all the other permit seekers that are coming forward. As part of this process, after this, once, once this refined map, this clarified map is adopted by the town council, wherever the line may fall, we're not saying where it should, we're saying this is our analysis. The zoning enforcement officer looked at this one, and he based his determination on evidence that he articulated within his letter.
Unfortunately, he didn't have the benefit of that.
That was not, that was, Michael's never met the zoning enforcement officer, and the zoning enforcement officer is not here to say...
All right, thank you. Mr. Dowell, second.
Thank you. This question is from Mr. Michael Wang.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. There have been two opinions given to the town of Winthrop, to the town council, about the land on the north side, as you're describing it, of Pauline Street. Have you read those opinions?
I have not.
All right. It's my opinion and many other opinion that Ingleside Park consists of 13 acres of land on the north side, excluding the original high school that was built on the corner of Pauline Street and Waldemar Ave., which consisted of about one and a half acres. There are opinions on that piece of property at the top of Pauline and Waldemar that exist. So I'd like you to take a look at those two opinions, they're available. I'm wondering whether it would be considered using Article 97 disposition of land as a process to determine how to use the land, the 13 acres of land that were given by townspeople in 1902, I believe, 13 acres of land, to be used as parkland. I want you to look that up, consider it, and get back to this group and to the planning board, whether it's 13 acres of land, six and a half acres of land, one and a half acres of land at the top of that street, at Pauline Street, and whether or not this town, like many other towns in the Commonwealth, a lot of towns, use Article 97 disposition of land to determine how to use the land that is considered parkland. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Riley?
Mr. Riley, Mr. Riley's going first, but he's got to turn the list.
He was up before you.
Which, Ellen?
I was only drawing by hand.
Now, this overlay, you know, when you're going to park tomorrow morning, there's a complete plan, they're doing it, they're doing it off the business district. How did this overlay compare to that one? I've not made any, George, no, there's been no, right now, that, you look at, there's a lot of change in this overlay compared to what you might find. The question is, bear in mind, forget 1965, you can go all the way back until the 1800, 19, oh, you should say 1900. And the maps of the center are very well done, too scaled, by the best engineer in the city of Boston, because he happened to live in London. So the question here is, now, the study done by Mass Area Planning, when they come in, is this representing their overlay roughly, or what actually did they do? The question in my mind is, now, there have been drastic changes made to what we have known, and clearly you can see, done architecturally, engineer-wise, if there are any great changes from where at least the trade, you know, area of the land for business use that changed. I'll do that part.
So we, we didn't reach back that far. And we did that, so we wanted to establish, we wanted our analysis to be based upon what the current zoning is, because this is going to be a forward-looking process. The historic context is always vital, and we always take a look at what it was, how it got there, how it evolved at the time. But this process, this map, was the one we used, the 2006 map, because this is the one that's the law. And we, this is, so if we're going to change the law, we're going to look at this map and what it should be tomorrow and going forward. That's the process we use. We tried to use as much historical context as we could, and I relied on yourself and Mr. Riley to give, and we looked at those maps and we took a close look at them. I did, I did anyway, but Michael, from his process, used an analysis that we used the 2006 map and the 14 interpretation of the map in order to develop this presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Riley?
If you take a look at the maps, the slide that's up there right now, and forget the 2014 thing, that was a mistake, it was done improperly. I don't know whether it was done on purpose or it was done by mistake, but it conveniently included every single parcel on Cottage Park Road, Bartlett Road, Somerset Avenue, in the center business district. What does that do? It takes a four-story allowance for businesses in the center business district and places it into it, because there's a distinction in the zoning block or parcels adjacent to a residential district. If you look at that map on Cottage Park Road, if you're down there, I can guarantee you that 20 Cottage Park Road is the end of that white period, and the start of the purple is the block behind it. The boundary line for that parcel is right there. We've shown, we've shown other kinds of maps, we've given them to the planning board a year ago, over a year ago. We knew that the, when the first, when the neighbors first saw the map, the, that was on the NA PC in the master plan, and how it had overlapped and included the houses. So we need to get this clarified, this looks like a mistake. We told it wasn't, I mean, it wasn't a valid map, it wasn't the map that was adopted by zoning, it was just an illustration. Harry Delahanty, because of all of the confusion, as acting town manager, did an 18-page report when he went back through every zoning vote of the town, going back to 1922, he came up with a conclusion, based on the foregoing information, it is the opinion of the town manager that there were no single family homes, or two-family homes, that border a business district on the center, on the center, Woodside Avenue, Cottage Park Road, Somerset Avenue, or Bartlett Road that are included in the center business district. That was his conclusion back then. When he made that conclusion, we asked the council, not the planning board, because it's, it's the council that my hang is pretty much directed at, to please clarify the line. If there's enough doubt that it took the 18 pages to come to his conclusion, wouldn't it be wise... wouldn't it be wise to just take what he's concluded, draw the map, take a look at the, the boundary lines, which are readily apparent, that are just easily visible down in the center, and adopt the map? We asked for that in, we asked for that in January of 2018. We asked repeatedly since then. Now, we come to the existing covered, do you want to take over, or do you want me to talk? Okay, thank you. It's taken that long to get to this point. Now, we get an interpretation, an application is filed by the building commissioner, that the properties on the corner right there are but a residential district, meaning that that 20 Cottage Park Road is in the residential district. According to the maps that you show, not only is 20 Cottage Park Road in the business district, but our home on 30 Cottage Park Road is in the business district. That's impossible. That's not, it's not, you can't go through any vote of a town meeting, going back to any of the maps, and conclude that that's the case. Take a look at the material I gave you, I gave you submissions by the town council back in 1960, back in 1970, that showed where the residential districts were by the block lines and so forth. I hope that what we're going to come up with is a plan that the planning board can take a look at all of this material and draw a map that's realistic, that takes into account what's really happened. You get the shadings and the overlay of the zoning map that wasn't drawn directly, but draw a map that's, that's accurate and clarify the matter once and for all, but do it correctly. There's no way in the world that the houses going down Cottage Park Road are in a business district. They're in a residential A district. And if they're not, they should be, but they, I can guarantee you that they are, they always have been in a residential district. So I, I hope that you'll take all the analysis into account, but come up with something that's realistic, something that reflects the reality. It, it continues to appear to us that all of this confusion and so forth is a smokescreen to allow private buildings in an area that's zoned for two and a half. Planning board said, if you're adjacent to a residential district, we're going to back up. It's not going to be as intrusive, they're not going to be, is that the buildings aren't going to be as high. They're going to have side yards, they're going to have rear yard protection. Those go out the window if the, those Center Business District properties are not, are found, be, not adjacent to a residential district. Somehow, it seems to me that this, all this confusion is a way of getting these things in through the back door instead of conforming with the zoning laws on the books.
That's it.
Jean Crawford, Precinct 5. So I do have a couple of questions. I'm not going to reiterate what Mr. Riley said. Everything that he spoke of was on my mind. We have got this decision, two or three, this is the third decision that we got the other day for the C P at planning board, that we are not, we are residences. It's two and a half stories, 35 feet, next to a residence. And that's what we are hoping that you'll hold us to. That's the law, that is the law. This 2006 map, we're not in it. That's the only legal last map that's in this town. So, Mr. Wang, I just want to back up a little bit to your focus area number one, on Cottage Park Road. You said, did you take a pictures? Did you? No, you did, okay. So you omitted a really important piece there. You forgot to take a picture of my house. My house is on this map here. And to me, you know, I've worked my whole life to, to own this house. And we've been citizens and good residential taxpayers in the town for 34 years. So, it kind of puzzles me when I look at this and I look at your little round circle that I've asked you to back up to. And the house that you did admit, you took Ms. Ferrante at 20 Cottage Park Road, you took the fellow out behind me that used to be Mr. Harvey's house. He's on it and I'm, I'm not clear on here where his is. But mine, you have a line dividing my house in your new little map here. And so if I sit at the left of my living room, I'm not in it. And if I sit to the right in my fireplace, or you go to the kitchen, you know, we're in it. So, this is disturbing. So as much as Joanna says she's disturbed, I'm really disturbed, really disturbed. I want to know, I want to see you follow the rules like I do. I play by the rules, I abide by the rules, I don't break the law. I want you all to do the same, okay? It's been a long time. The duress, the mental duress, the aggravation. I want to know how the town's going to compensate us for all that, if you can answer me that. Jeopardizing our houses, our, what we've worked our whole entire life for, raised our kids here. What are you going to do for us when you play, play with our lives and our homes? What are you going to do for us? How can you answer that? Are you going to, you know, really, I, I also have another question. Why isn't Mr. Legge here? Why wouldn't you want him to see these things? He made a decision, I'm happy he did, but I'd be even happier if he was here in the room tonight doing his job. What do you think about that?
There were a lot of questions there.
Yeah.
I'll do my best to, to my best answer. Mr. Legge's not here.
Right.
And I didn't, I personally didn't invite him here. Because, like I said, we tried to keep these processes separate. We didn't want to influence his decision-making as a zoning enforcement officer.
But he made a decision, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And this process began, was, was ongoing as he was making that decision. We didn't want to color that at all. We wanted him to be act independently of any, any analysis that we were ongoing. This is, just so I can be clear, this is a planning activity. This is a planning exercise. This is not a decision, yeah. We're not, we're, we're trying to figure out where we should go, not necessarily where we are, how the map should be interpreted. We're trying to get your input. So I'm hearing a lot, I'm hearing a lot of helpful things there from Mr. Riley and yourself, that said, that tells me where the line should be. So that when we go back, we start, and Mr. Dowell, I can't forget Mr. Dowell.
It shouldn't be through our homes.
Yeah, exactly.
It shouldn't be.
It, I, I empathize with your confusion and your apprehension about it. Because when I'm looking at it as a town official, I'm confused as well.
So try to living our life.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I do want to dispel something, first of all. Is that if the zoning does change for any, for any home, that does not affect your current condition. No one's going to kick down the door and say, guess what? You have to open up a business in your home today. It's not going to happen. That's not how zoning works.
That isn't the issue. I'm not going to open a business.
No, but that, that's exactly what I'm saying.
I bought a house.
There is no, there's no power that, that I have under the law to make you own a business, or make you, make you run a business out of your home.
I don't want to own a business.
That's what I'm saying, but, but.
I'm not in the business district.
If the zoning changes.
Go through the sheet, because if you can't have this back and forth.
This is a, this is a.
I'm going to end it just by saying, I would hope that you would represent the people, the hard-working people of this town, and do it in the right manner.
We're here.
Don't do things behind our back in order to, I get, we need development, but don't do it in the wrong way.
We're here tonight doing just that, yeah. That's the reason we're here tonight. We could have done this in, in, like we said in the planning board report, Michael and I could have sat in my office and drawn a map.
Well, we could have ended it two or three years ago when we got answers before, too. The town doesn't like the answer, we keep digging.
Okay, come on, come on. The board, the board is making a recommendation, this is public party, not back and forth. And I, I can feel the tension in the room, so that's why I'm letting it go, but we, we can't do that, okay? So, Tangi and then Mr. E, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did.
Let, let Tangi respond.
I, I feel like I recall, and I'm not sure, and I guess you just told me that we couldn't get this answered, but, do we know who worked on that original 2006 map? Was that the one that Glenn Garber worked on? I remember Mr. Proctor was here on that planning board, Mr. Dimes was on the planning board. I was taking all the minutes for that planning board. I don't think Gina was on it yet.
I wasn't on it either.
I think that we should probably, I, I'm pretty sure Glenn Garber, who worked on this, had we reached out to him to ask him what his plans, because this is obviously the one that was adopted. So maybe he is still around and we could reach out to him and say, our version's blurry, we need a clearer version, this is what's been adopted, can you give us what you have on file? I just didn't know if we've tried that yet. I think, Mr. Riley, you were present at that. Yeah.
I don't, I don't believe there was an adoption of a zoning map in 2006. I don't recall anything coming through the council for adoption. I think the map in 2006 was drawn to illustrate the area so that it would be a color map that somebody.
Like the gateway and it was Center Business.
I think they, the adopted map, the vote of the town meeting, it would have been the town meeting, to adopt a zoning map would have taken place prior to 2006, it would have been something. I'm not sure, I saw a map that, or a reference to a map in 1987, that's possible, there's, there's one there, a map going back to 1936. We didn't, I don't think we adopted and voted, and then went to the zoning ordinance to include it on that in 2006.
Mr. E, did you want to?
Yes. Mr. Wang?
Yes, ma'am.
You.
In here.
My name is Johnny, I live in Precinct 1, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wang, you worked on the orig, uh, back in 2014 on the master plan?
In 2017.
2017, yes. Part of the confusion posed in the master plan is where there were dashed lines into residential areas on those plans. I always took that to be the limit of work, not a zoning boundary. Am I wrong, or am I right?
Are you talking about the diagram that I showed at the end of my presentation?
No, the actual, very thick document you presented to the town, the maps in there that you had showed dashed lines that went into residential, what people here would consider to be residential.
If I'm guessing what you're referring to, it's, it's similar to the one I showed there, and it was more sort of a diagram about possible connectivity between the Center Business District and the surrounding neighborhoods. And it wasn't sort of codifying any kind of a map boundary or anything like that, it was more sort of talking about those connections.
So it wasn't a zoning map, by the way?
Nothing associated with that. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm kind of somewhat at a loss as to how we're looking at this as being three lots of residential that's now considered to be part of the Center Business District itself. I don't know how we got there. What I do think is the recollections of Mr. Dimes and Mr. Riley are absolutely correct. The map was looked at, now, to clarify, and to unblock the contemporary, uh, street map of the town. And that's what happened, and that's what got printed. Uh, why did, I am also confused, Mr. Wang, why you use the MPAC document to overlay this on instead of, or the 2006 map, instead of a, a prior zoning map from the time of then?
These are the two maps that are most current, and as you could say, the 2014 one was not adopted, but it was associated with a zoning amendment that was done.
No, it wasn't a zoning map, it was a representation of the zone. I don't think there was any label of amendment at that time.
I agree, I agree, that's my understanding.
So we shouldn't even be talking about that.
Okay. So, can I just point out that when you talk about why are those residential parcels in the Center Business District, that your current, this 2006 map has a number of parcels that are residential, Fremont Street, that are on, in the Center Business District. And that's not a common thing, you know, that maybe.
Fremont Street is a good example, but I don't really want to discuss that at the moment. I'm trying to get clear what you're showing us and trying to understand where we're at right now. And also, you man, hopefully, do something to help you out here. I don't know if this is going to work that way, but what we have at the moment is, according to my understanding of it, the last time that there was a zoning map adopted by the town council that reflects the Center Business District was in 1987. And that clearly shows a figure ground map following, uh, property lines with the buildings hashed in, and as you know, figured grounds are very common. The history, and this kind of gets to what was said at the planning board the last time, and what we're talking about tonight, and the very proper lack of understanding how we can have a view by the, by the zoning official in a different view when we look at these maps. Not unusual for small towns, and even in fact in the city of Boston, a large city, zoning very often follows property lines, and it's extremely common when a town is doing zoning, that they follow property lines when creating the zone, which has been the history of this town. I think everybody with a memory has been involved with, agree that's the case. The light industry we have is one lot, and there's no other light industry in town. But we've got one light industry zone. What we're looking at is a fuzzy map that's been interpreted, and we've made a point. And I think, I've been told before, I don't know where it is now. And that's because we've layered on confusion instead of thinking through the history. And what a building official does is it looks at the previous maps, it looks at previous methods of interpretation. It goes on the four corners of the documents, so to say, and it's writing, that's really pretty easy. And it lets the building official off the hook, he reads it, that's the interpretation, we don't like it, goes to the board of appeals. And then it gets overruled a lot. But, in this case, what has happened here, and how the building, we have one where you're confused because some lines that nobody could quite say what they were on the planning document, other than indicative of the planning process, have been misinterpreted to be zoning boundaries, which Mr. Wang, you say they are not, and I take your word for it. And, so, I, we looked at what the building, uh, the zoning enforcement official determined, and it's that it follows the past pattern of this town, we do it on the property boundaries. And the uses at the time the map was created within those boundaries, and that was, that's the intention. You brought up Fremont Street, and there's a pretty easy explanation for that. Is that the net in 2000, or in 1987, that was residential on Fremont, business on the other side. And because it's fuzzy, you might say, oh God, that's just a fuzzy line, it seems to go in a lot. But if you're familiar, you see that is indicative of a property line. And when you're printing, printing, going through a presses, not always exact, which is why you don't use printed maps. You use survey maps done by people that are paid to do the zoning maps. And some of them, historic, are quite colorful and informative. I can look at a boundary that seems to be unclear on Somerset Ave. Now, Richard Courier's house is right next to, um, the dress shop that operates there. And there's a walkway in between, which you can make out on the 2006 map. The commercial district ends, and you can see the walkway, and a vague outline of it on the map, ends at that walkway. So Richard Courier and two other properties are not in the business district. I think that's the kind of thing that we need to look at, rather than speculative presentations. I thank you for your effort, but I think the zoning official may deal considerably, or disagree considerably, in terms of a process, we've reached way into the future here. But I think it's something that we need to do as a town, and to understand that the town, this is not the center. There's five different shopping areas that meet the needs of many, many people. This is one part of the greater whole. And I personally think we're kind of losing track of our town, the character of this town, the kind of town that we want it to be, and the kind of town that if somebody wants to move to.
Just means, I don't want to cut you off.
I'm done.
Thank you very much, I was a full minute.
Four five minutes.
We don't have a planner that works for the, the town of Winthrop, so it's so rare that we actually get a planner in front of us. And so I'm, I'm curious. Um, we don't have a planner that works for the, the town of Winter, so it's so rare that we actually get a planner in front of us, and so I'm, I'm curious. When drawing zoning maps, if you were to start from scratch on some map, if drawing zoning maps, do you take it to have the current use of the property or the future use that you envision for the property? Or how does current use play into the way that zoning maps are drawn? No, no, I'm genuinely curious because we have, we have residential properties in the CBD. Yeah, we have triple deckers all through the CBD, we do, and so, and so, what, like, what makes a difference between a property like that and then, like, how does that, how does that distinction get made? In other, in other communities and other towns, in, 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 in planning theory, I guess, as well?
Well, that's a really tough question, and, uh, the best way I can answer pieces of it are, you know, I think that, you've talked about following parcel lines, we've talked about following centerline streets, there are a lot of people that would argue that actually having a complete street in the zone is more valid than, than having the zone line down the middle of the street, and have residential on one side and commercial on the other, so that might make an argument that your zone line could, could follow like a mid-block parcel, you know, common parcel lines. I've never drawn a zoning map from scratch in a town, so, um, they're always sort of an evolution, but I don't think we have anything to.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that if you, you look at the land use diagram that's there, the way that the current condition was adopted is because of a lack of planning, you know, a lack of zoning that was in place, or variances that were issued over time, we're trying to evolve that process so that in twenty-five years, thirty years, we have it looking the way that the town wants it to look, in the condition as what we think the evolution of the town should. That's why, when I say what zoning is, zoning is a policy statement of what we want the future to look like for ourselves. And that's why we use the master plan process, although it's not a legally binding document, we use that to inform the zoning so that we can rely on it, we can, it informs that process because it's telling us what the town's vision for itself is. And that, when we put that into codified zoning, that it tells us, and that will evolve over time, and if you're not issuing a ton of variances, it should look like that over time.
Let me add one other thought, because I'm also working on zoning in the city of Newton, uh, which is going through a whole re-zoning process now. Um, the, the zoning in Newton was done at a time, uh, so now eighty-five percent of the parcels in Newton are non-conforming. So, and that's a pretty typical situation now, that you have a lot of non-conforming uses in, you know, in, in the zone that they're, they actually located in. Newton's moving away from, uh, criteria such as floor-to-air ratio, things like that, and trying to go to what's called contextual zoning, uh, so that it's really more, you know, there are transition zones between the borough centers and neighborhood districts, uh, which is on a larger scale than what you're, you know, seeing today here, uh, with the way that the PC rewrote the center business district, but, um, hey.
Is there a specific timeline for when something is hopefully to be adopted, or worked on, or an endpoint to the nineteen eighty-seven to present day? We can answer.
Gene is gonna answer that.
Since we're the ones that have to make the recommendation, and town councils are the ones that are supposed to make the decision, um, I think it's best for us to answer that, and, um, and I know we all want it done as soon as possible. Um, not that we don't love coming to these meetings and having the same discussion, but, um, it will help us better, you know, be better informed to make decisions going forward. Um, but it's also really important that we get enough public feedback, like Robert was saying, I love all the people that are here, but it's the same people we see every time we have the meeting, and we want to hear from people across the whole town so that we can get all the feedback and make the best decision. We know what we, what we think, but we're here to represent the town and do what's best for the town, so, um, the more people that come out, the faster, the faster it will.
My part, my second part to that question would be then, because you have multiple business districts, if I'm correct, right, there's like six, five? So, five, the largest, well, I, I still include like Italian Joes down the point, so, forgive me. Looking at the center business district, and where the eyesight, common sense boundaries that I'm hearing a lot of the conversation about exist, if, if we're going by that standard from when the redo was in eighty-seven, and we don't have documentation in writing that anything's changed since then, how long will it be till we know about that? Is there a way to go back and get that so we know today for the developers that are coming to us and saying, we want to do X, Y, and Z, is it the nineteen eighty-seven? Did we really legally adopt this in two thousand and six? And that, I would like to know whether we can have that information next.
Well, there should be, there should be minutes, there should be minutes in the town council whether or not they voted to adopt that map.
I mean, that's part of the analysis that we're gonna do, I guess the best thing I can say is, this is helpful, it's not the recommendation, it's just an idea.
Right, well, in the process of.
So, and we don't have to go back to a nineteen eighty-seven map and say, oh no, the line is here so we can change it, we can just say, you know what, that doesn't make sense, we're gonna change that.
From the dialogue that I heard though, if we're not a hundred percent certain that in two thousand and six, this was adopted as our current zoning, and you have the president of the council saying, I don't believe we actually adopted that, and that the previous one was done in nineteen eighty-seven, we, we need to know if our laws currently state that we're in nineteen eighty-seven laws or two thousand and six laws. For anybody else before we say, yes, please provide this property.
To do, yes, to do something with your property, and if there's any question, that's what the, that's what the zoning enforcement officer's role is. So the, like you said in the beginning of your first question, the sooner we can get this done, so the less instances the zoning officer has to step in, the better.
Just as a clarification of that, to kind of piggyback on that point, we've asked town attorney for her opinion on this. We said, what is the, what is the current zoning map, and they have said that's the two thousand and six map, that's the reason we're using it.
Based off what?
Their opinion, they did the analysis, they did, they, they provide those, we rely on them, they provide the opinion, and we can rely on that moving forward, so that's, that's what, that's what we do, that's our process.
My name's Ruth Ashton, I'm in precinct five, I have a couple comments, I've never seen a map with no legend, so what's the purple, what's the pink, what's the orange? I mean, it doesn't look like many of them, okay, that was that?
Yeah, this is the, this is the.
Okay, so what's.
That's currently available on our, with, with it in law, within the ordinances of the town, chapter sixty-two.
So what was the purple and what was the pink?
The purple is center business district, the pink is business area.
According to the twenty-fourteen.
The twenty-six, two thousand and six map.
So is this the zoning map that you went, okay, could you mind going back to the other one that had? So, yeah, so what's the brown on this one?
That is just, uh, an effort to sort of distill the two maps together and say that that's a potential location for a boundary to be discussed. It's not anything that's, you know, written in the law or anything like that, it's just a, it's taken through an average of the existing maps, and someone's made the point just now that maybe the two thousand and fourteen map doesn't even merit having an influence on the two thousand and six map, so it is, this all to be discussed further.
So I guess my question is, if the ground is all streets, why are these houses burning?
Because they're not in the purple in the, in the previous map, this is a combination of three different maps, so, anyway, I could explain to you further if you want. It's an overlay.
We're gonna get ready to close probably shortly.
David, if, if, if you would, and Michael as well, you, you saying that the, the two thousand and six map was codified correctly?
Yeah.
And the outside council, their opinion is that, uh, it is, it is, would it be possible, at least for, for the board itself, because we've gone through this on multiple occasions, Mr. Riley is saying that it is not, okay? If we could just ask them where they got their information in regards, to them to reach their decision, because we've gone, and Jane, or am I correct, we've gone through this probably a half a dozen times.
And I think all this, all these questions are, are kind of underscoring the overall point, is that there is a lot of confusion.
Right.
We're looking to, in a lot of ways, this process and these options is a fresh start, and that's what we're, and that's what we're looking for.
I, I, I agree, but if we can get that question.
Step off first, I, I might, I might react.
Yeah, if we can get that, the answer to that question, or at least this way, dear, we know where the research that they did for them to compile their, their decision, thank you.
Hi, but we want to get to public comments, so let Joanna and Mr. Riley, the board's gonna finish up.
I have two, I have two questions, no more soapbox, I'm done with soapbox, two, two real questions. One is really for David, I think, as part of going through this process over the last few months, aside from the map, there have been other issues that have been, um, raised regarding the zoning policy, not just the map.
The white letter zone.
Right, and so I'm wondering, is that also gonna be part of this? I think there were some good ideas, like regardless of where the outside of the map winds up, um, I think Bob actually raised this as an idea yesterday, uh, in the planning board last time, was that, um, that perhaps the two and a half, if you're in a budding property, that the two and a half is, uh, is maybe subjected to like a bigger setback as opposed to the whole property line, which sounded very reasonable and kind of could be a best of both worlds result for people in the, on those lines. There was, I, there's other, and there's other ideas kind of similar to that, there's also process changes that I think were initially intended when this board was created, that after analysis came up, that they're actually, that they don't have the power, so that I think initially they thought they had variance power, but then we found out we didn't. Are those things gonna be clarified, um, as part of this process, or is this just focused on map?
This process right now, the first step of this process is the map, that's what the community is telling me, telling Michael, telling the planning board that it wants to see done first. As part of the larger process, yeah, you're right, we'll take, we'll, we'll absolutely take a look at the white letter zoning, to see if it fits, yeah, it's, it's, it's more of a congruent process that's at a, that's at an earlier stage.
Okay, then I have a second question, sorry, um, for, this one's for you, in your experience of zoning and making all these changes, um, to town maps, when residential homes are put and upzoned into business districts, which happens all the time, whether it's a triple decker, a single family, whatever, in your experience, do those properties have increased property value?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, correct?
Yeah.
Um, I would just as a general statement think that if I was fortunate enough to be in a house that was being upzoned, I would be very happy about that, from the value perspective, because I could continue to live there as long as I wanted, I could sell it to someone else who wanted to live there as a resident, I could also sell it to a developer.
I issue you to the next person over. Mr. Riley? Put that map back up, because a lot of the center business districts. If you took a look at how Cottage Park Road, Somerset Avenue, there's a commercial building on the corner, and a property line right here, Jean Coughlin's house is located here. But if you look, you can see that the, the property for the business district is diagonally across the street from a corner of that building. It's, 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 it's visible from where that line is, if you take a look, if you take a look at it, if you take, if you take a look at the various walk lines that we've shown, these boundaries that they show, where they show the boundary line going through my house and around and different places like that, don't reflect this kind of reality. It's directly across the street, if you stand at the corner of this Somerset Avenue property on, on, and Cottage Park Road, and look diagonally across the street, you'll see the property line, the twenty Cottage Park Road. Like, it's, I, I think when we go through all these color of things and zooming in and overlays, and the line goes up the street, and, uh, other properties are included in the business district, I think the reality is pretty clear, if you take, if you, if you're drawing the map, just take a look at the boundary lines. I gotta tell you, my house never was in a business district, it's not in a business district. I was on the planning board, I looked at the maps, I knew what the maps were when I bought my house, I was on the board of selectmen when I bought the house. I've been a town meeting member, council president, the, the place never changed. I don't believe that's gonna be, be doing me a favor by putting it in a business district, but maybe you'd like to find out what kind of business I can open there.
Sorry to speak, but my name's Annika, but I'm precinct five, I'm here tonight representing myself and my mother, who's now home, seems to have now a line drawn around it and found its way into the CBD, not ever before. So, um, just, we're here with others as well, because we've been to these meetings for a long time now, we're very concerned, we're very passionate about this. You, I think you all know us, we're not here to be obstructionist, but we all agree that something does need to be done in the center area to refurbish it and whatnot, but it needs to be done right, it needs to be done by right. The lines of the zoning and what's being proposed need to be done correctly, and as Mr. Riley did mention earlier, two thousand and fourteen was a huge mistake in the reason why we're all here tonight. And there are a lot of people here tonight because we are ones representing others who for some reason or whatever, don't want to come here, don't have, you know, don't want to be visible to come here, but we are representing those people. Aside from what's been raised by you to us individually and collectively throughout the course and many years of this whole project and these meetings, and I can go into them, but you all know them, and I don't need to go over that, we do have very valid concerns over the precedent-setting nature of the decisions that have been made and that are going to be made, and that are going to affect us forever. After this presentation, and my, my, with my concerns and fears are probably even greater, I think, than they were before I came into this group, for what reason, I don't know, I just, just, that's my feeling. I'm concerned of the developers who present themselves for the areas now currently rezoned for four stories, um, who can simply file a variance to get, to go even higher, just like now, what's to stop them from, who's up proposing that? Just like now that we're dealing with another developer who's now proposing to do that, it just leaves me baffled, I, these are homes, these are homes and their lives that are being played with in a monopoly fashion, I just don't understand them. Believe me, I'm really trying hard to maintain the faith and the trust that in the end things are going to be done right, and that they're going to be done and resolved successfully. But you all know, once you've allowed one thing to happen, you're going to open the door to a slippery slope, and everyone is gonna look for, and find a loophole, I can be sure of that. The zoning for the center business buildings should go back to two point five, as well as not to include my home, Norma's couple's home, in the CBDs. I can go on, but I think I've said enough, and I just pray that the concerns wouldn't be addressed and the recent identity status would be resolved, thank you.
All right, we're gonna close public comments, have a couple of final comments from the board, and probably, Robert, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I just, um, I have a question, because I think it's very germane to the, to the issue here, and, um, and that is, um, what, what steps is the town of Winter going to do to address the open issue of which board has the authority over the CBD? That was, it's a, it's an open question in my mind, that is, uh, pretty easy to close, um, and it, it was, uh, my understanding that in two thousand and fourteen, one of the things we were doing to compensate for the lack of a town planner, and the lack of any kind of congruency between these boards, because we never interact with the zoning board, um, was to have at the CB a one-board, one-stop shopping to make development and the interactions of the neighbors easier, so there'd be only one place and one line of thought that would be consistent through it. That was the recommendation from the MAPC, the recommendation that we brought to the rules and ordinance, rules and ordinance voted and put those, um, you know, things into the right numbers within the code, and then read those at a town council, and the town council voted it in. Yet, when I go to the town multi-code, I don't see that we are in charge of the CBD, and you can imagine hypothetically, that causes problems for people trying to build or live next to the CBD. And so, I need that cleared up, because otherwise, it just looks like I'm wasting my time sitting here at this board for the last ten years, and it is really the, one of the first issues. One of the other issues, if you're asking this board to support this process, we should have helped you write the process. I would have never said it was cool to firewall the guy who's deciding where the lines are with the guy who's doing research on where the lines are. That is not smart, and it's gonna always cause a question of what the, the legality and the realities, and, and it's just always gonna be in limbo, and you're gonna be able to shoot each other in the foot forever. The whole point of the zoning, the whole point of the master plan, the whole point of going from two and a half to three and a half to ten and a half, is to try to decide what the town wants and how to make the center better. We shouldn't be trying to decide Jeanie Coughlin's house for two and a half years, it's sad, it's really sad, it's a commentary on this town, we need to do better. First, you need to tell me if the. First, you need to tell me if the planning board is the variance process for this area so people know we are or are not one-stop shopping to get things done. Because if I'm going to get blamed for everything that's being done in the Central Business District, I want to be in charge of everything that's being done in the Central Business District. It's only fair. So that's my closing comments before I get worse. But thank you all for your time and I'm sorry that you're all having to kind of come and do this. I'm sorry on both sides. I know there's people that we desperately want to make the empty storefronts not empty anymore. We need to respect them. They're taking risks on us. We also need to respect the neighbors. I think this board is capable of kind of threading that needle, but as of last vote, we, we didn't, we didn't know we could or we're still not sure we can. I need that clarified. I don't know if that's through the chair or through you, but that should come right into this planning board. Thank you.
Phil commenting?
You officially called the meeting, right? So it's our meeting, it's our special meeting, so we just need a motion to close. We're not going to, this is not going to be a continued process. We'll just have to blow it now the next time. So Gina will make a motion to close. Does anybody want a second?
A second.
Any seconds? All in favor, say aye. Aye. We'll close the meeting during around 7:30.